Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Tom Tarpey, Chairman of the Finance Committee. Welcome to this March 11 Finance Committee hearing, public hearing, for the purpose of hearing the budgets of the enterprise funds in town. The enterprise funds are seven organizations in town which are self-funding. That is, they survive on their revenues from their services. And I think you're all familiar with them. They are the Concord Municipal Light Plant, the Water Department, the Sewer Department, the Solid Waste Fund within Public Works, the BD Swim and Fitness Center, the Recreation Department, and the newly-formed Minuteman Media Network. So, without further ado, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Wood and to talk about the municipal light plant. Dave?
Good evening. My name is David Wood. I'm the Director of the Light Plant. Tonight I'll be presenting Article 38, Light Plant Expenditures and Payment in Lieu of Taxes. I'll go through the electric side first, and then I'll invite our Chief Information Officer, Mark Howell, up to go through the telecommunications portion. So, this slide shows the net income since 2014 through the forecast for 2019. You can see in the green, that's the total revenue shown. It's a little over $30 million, and the total expenses is just under that. The net income, which is down below, shows you in the orange line. Here's our demand since 2000. We have 19 and 20 forecasted on there. You can see we had a dip over the last few years, and it's starting to rise back up. That dip is primarily from commercial load loss, and, you know, we're starting to see some load growth. While small, it is coming. So, the total sales revenue for 2019 is $30.6 million. You can see that in the right corner. It's increased from 2018, which was $29.2 million. Thirty-eight percent of that revenue comes from residential; 42% comes from commercial and industrial; 5% from municipal; and 15% from all others. The total power supply cost for 2019 is $21.2 million. That's an increase of almost $1 million from 2018. Each block here represents the percentage where that is being made up of. The blue is the energy; the orange is the forward capacity; gray is transmission; fixed costs and other costs are in yellow; and then the green is the renewable energy credits. You can see that has increased for 2019, and that's because we started purchasing renewable energy credits in the fourth quarter of 2019. And I'll get into that in a little bit detailed in a minute. The percentage of purchased power, this is shown by fuel type for lack of a better expression. You can see 57% is from natural gas, 7% from hydro. The light gray is landfill gas, and that represents about 2%. 18% is spot market from ISO New England. By design, we leave about 20% open so that we don't buy too much energy and go long. 6% is solar, and 10% is wind. And this is the percentage by the provider. What this represents is our portfolio. It's pretty diverse. As you can see, there's a number of suppliers down there between hydro, wind, solar, natural gas, ISO purchases. It's pretty diverse. Our operating costs for 2019 are $28.4 million, and 75% of that is our power supply. Power supply generally runs anywhere from 75% to 80% of our total operating costs. O&amp;M, operation and maintenance, is just under 20%, and depreciation is 7%. And those numbers run pretty standard from year to year. There's no real surprise there. We have other obligations, such as our payment in lieu of taxes, which represents about 31% of the $1.5 million shown here, the underground surcharge, and the debt services. And these numbers run pretty consistent from year to year as well. In this slide, you can see the capital outlay, and you can see it's increased significantly for the forecast for 2019. A few years back, we got town meeting authorization for borrowing of $3 million for smart meters, and that's shown here. We also have an increase in underground expenses for 2019. Primarily, we're doing the Cambridge Turnpike project along with Public Works, so you can see about a million increase there as well. Our depreciation expenses for the capital outlay are pretty consistent from year to year, so little fluctuation, but not that much. So, our effective return for the forecast for 2019 is 2.3%. The target that the Light Board has adopted a number of years ago was between 2% and 3%, so we're within that guideline, and that would equal out to about $1.4 million. In 2017, this slide's a little busy. We tried a number of different formats. I don't expect everyone to see it, but we didn't have time to try another one. What this is, is in 2017, we came up with a strategic plan, and at the bottom, in the colors, you can see the initiatives that we took on. Rec purchases, which is on the far left, electric vehicles, which is gray beside it, our utility billing software upgrade, which is in yellow, time of use rates, smart meters, utility-scale storage, energy efficiency, smart thermostats, space water heating, and distributed solar. And so if you look at each category, you can see what started, where we are, and when things are going to happen that haven't started yet. For example, utility-scale storage, it's shown to be started in 2019. I am currently working on that right now, and that's why it's shown higher in the blocks. The rec purchases, we implemented that in the fourth quarter of 2018, and we were actually able to get our power supply to 54% carbon-free, and we're pretty excited about that. We're going to continue that in '19, and we expect to be close, if not 100% carbon-free power supply. So, we're a little ahead of schedule from what we forecasted when we put it together, but we're really, really excited about that. It also ties in with some of the other initiatives, like electric vehicles. So if you have an electric vehicle, and we have a carbon-free power supply, you're charging your car with carbon-free power. So, that's kind of the strategic plan, and I could go through each item, but we'd be here pretty much all night. You can see the one that I did want to talk about is the smart meters. That's the, we're starting to work on an RFP for that, and we expect to have those deployed, I'm hoping, by the end of 2020, but that's probably a little optimistic. It'll probably be finished in 2021, so. Now I'll invite Mark up. Well, do you have any questions before I invite Mark up?
Dean Vanfield, I have just one question. You have a one-and-a-half-million-dollar, your other obligations of which about a third of that is pilot.
Yep.
Can you just tell us how you determine what the pilot is that you'll pay?
Sure. So, our pilot is based on the previous year's sales, audited sales numbers for kilowatt-hours, and then that number is multiplied by .0075, and that comes up with your number. So, you know, the sales were down a little bit in 2018, '17 rather, and so the pilot went down just a little bit, but it stays pretty steady where it is.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Last year, did you have a chart that showed the cost per kilowatt-hour of?
The cost per kilowatt-hour for the various types of energy?
I don't think I did, but I could've. I can double-check that.
I thought you had something. So it showed us like what hydro was, which was pretty cheap.
Yep.
And then what some of the other renewables were versus the fossil fuels.
Yeah, we didn't have a breakdown of that. A lot of the power supply is confidential information, so we have to show it without showing pricing. But, you know, we, I don't think we did, but we could've lumped things together so that you could see the average, but I'd have to double-check that.
Okay.
Can I ask you about one of your early charts, the one that showed the sales by customer?
Yep.
There was a big change in the all-other category.
That's the one.
Okay, so.
Was responsible for that, please?
So, that's a great question. I looked at that before I came here, because that jumped out at me as well. The all-other is increased by about 7%, and that's because of the added penny for the rec purchases, so that goes into the sales area, and that's why that's up.
I see. Okay.
And the return, the 2.3% return, how should, how should we think about that going forward the next, say, five years? What has to happen for that to get closer to, I guess, your 3% range?
Well, we want to be careful that, you know, we're not going too high, because that means you're over-collecting on rates. So, but we don't want to go too low, because sales fluctuates based on degree day and heating and cooling. So, when the Board adopted that 2% to 3%, they felt that that was a modest increase, and we have exceeded that before, you know, just because sales were really high in a couple of years. But typically, we come in right around that, what we forecast, so I think it's a good target for now, and I think, you know, the Board will continue to review that over years.
Yeah.
But I think it's, I think it's still a good target.
All right. Thank you.
I just have a comment. It's not really a question. When this chart is shown, it, to me, it's quite stark that residential represents about 38% of our consumption, commercial-industrial 42. If you were to look at the tax base, it's more like 80/20 residential to commercial. So the commercial usage here is rather stark, you know, it's a very, they're a very heavy consumer. What do we do to encourage efficiencies within businesses?
We have, we have rebate programs for commercial customers. We started those a few years back. We didn't have them before. All our rebate programs are residential, and they're contributing towards that. So, we created commercial lighting rebate programs. They can do audits for their buildings, so we have things of that nature, as well as, you know, if they decided to put a heat pump in or something like that. A heat pump wouldn't really be in a large commercial, it'd be more of a small commercial, would be my taking, but we, we have developed programs for them to help the energy efficiency.
Thanks.
So, ready for Mark?
I'm Mark Howell. I'm the Chief Information Officer for the town. I thought it might be a good idea just to remind everybody, especially since this gets recorded, that, that all of the years that we're talking about are calendar years. The light plant, unlike basically every other department in town, runs on a calendar fiscal year. So when we say 2019, that just started, as opposed to being sort of nine months in. So, the internet service that, from the light plant, will be, will have been available for five years this week. We actually made an announcement of its availability on March 14, 2014. So that's how long it's been here. It's been my pleasure to be, be leading that effort, and we've really made quite a bit of progress, and, and so I'm quite pleased to show you this plan today. The speeds that are available vary from 35 megabits per second to 400 megabits per second for our residents and our businesses here in Concord. Our current system is capable of delivering a 1 gigabit-per-second service. We don't have any customers that are taking it at that level yet, but we anticipate there is a demand for that, and you hear about GigCities and things like that. And while, you know, it's technically possible, it's also really not needed by, by anybody yet, but we would be prepared to do that. We have over 1,200 customers who were billed in, in 2019, and our rates compare quite favorably with other suppliers. We, we figure we're about 15% or more cheaper for the similar speed offerings to some of the other available. And if you want more details on it specifically, using ConcordMA.gov/broadband will get you that. Two things that, that I mentioned last year, and in particular the year before, is that we feel really strongly about customer privacy and net neutrality. So we're pursuing policies where we, we do everything we can to keep our customers' data private. We don't sell it, we don't share it. We only use what we need to use in order to operate the system effectively. And as far as traffic, our policy is to treat all traffic absolutely equally. So, we do our, our best to provide a service which doesn't favor any particular suppliers or content, and is, is effective as possible in terms of helping our customers not have their data collected by our service for other reasons. Our 2018 results were really extremely good. We grew about 26% over 2017, and you'll see when I show you the growth chart, it's been really quite steady year-over-year for the last several years. Our 2017 financial results were, were also very good, and this, the, I need to thank the finance staff at the light plant, has done a really great job over the last year in, in helping us, you know, get our books really up to, up to snuff. So we know that we had a net income of about $72,000 on 764,000, almost 765, of revenue in 2017, and in 2018, we billed 994,000, and we're anticipating, we have still some work to do to close that completely, but about $109,000 in, in net income. So that's really quite strong and very positive for, for this service. We added a network engineer to the staff. We share that person with an interm, under an intermunicipal agreement with Bedford. That allows us to get a very skilled person on a part-time basis, essentially, and it's useful with our sort of mission to, to be cooperative from a municipal perspective. We also added Wi-Fi mesh or extend, you, you might recognize them as Wi-Fi extenders, to the service offering in 2018, and that's an add-on that people can add one to, up to four of these devices for a small extra charge per month. This is a chart that shows our revenue from residences and business, residential customers and business customers, really since inception. So you can see the growth has been quite steady, and roughly about the same amount of revenue growth year-over-year. In 2018, we budgeted about $944,000 in revenue from, from these sources, and we came in at just under that, at about $930,000. And we've put together a budget plan for 2019, which represents approximately the same amount of growth year-over-year. Subscription revenue is expected to increase about 19%, as I just showed, $101,128,000 in revenue, and we've predicted a net income of about $9,000. We really are not looking to make a large profit in this, in this business, and we do expect to make some investments this year. So we're pleased that we had a good return in, in 2018, but it's really a little too early in this business to be trying to make those sorts of returns for the business. So we've intentionally tried to conservatively plan that. We do plan to hire telecom director. We have basically a five-person staff now, and we need to put a manager over that, as well as add a fourth telecom technician. As our, as our subscriber base grows, the, the need for call-outs for service offerings, most recently, that's taken the form of restoring services after, after storms. So every time we have one of these storms that comes through town, we have a number of customers that need us, and, and so we, we are filling the need. We anticipate adding a technician about midway through the year, and we'll start recruiting for the director almost immediately. We do plan to begin a capital program to upgrade our equipment. The, the basic equipment that we're using to, to run this has been in service for seven years or so, since before we started offering internet, because we used it to build our smart grid system initially, and the, we need to go to the next generation of equipment in order to support 10-gig services, and that's probably going to take us about two to three years to complete that capital investment program. This is a, a final chart that just shows our total revenue, our expenses per year. The, the orange line across the bottom is an indicator of what our net income was. You can see that it ran negative for, through 2016, and then has gone positive since then, and we're predicting it to be just about break-even. Obviously, we're, we're conservative in terms of, of planning for expenses, and so our, our hope obvious, always is that we'll provide a slightly stronger net income than, than we have budgeted. That's, that's the way to be. And do I have, actually, I don't. Okay. And in your budget book, if you look at the last page of the telecom section, you can also see some reporting on our borrowing that we have done in the past. Town meeting originally authorized $1 million of borrowing to start the broadband business. We borrowed all of that in 2017. A second $1 million authorization was provided. We have not chosen to use any of that authorization yet. We've been funding our growth out of both our current revenues and, to some extent, out of light plant cash, but that will be, it will become necessary to use some of that in order to work with the capital upgrade program. So I'd be happy to take any questions about telecom.
Can you discuss the capital program, how much it is and over what period?
As I said, it'll probably take us two to three years. The numbers are not in yet. We're budgeting $100,000 for basically initial equipment replacement. There are six devices that, that need to be replaced altogether, and so we're, and we will actually probably be able to flatten it into, into two, believe it or not, because we do, we do that, do see the, but we have to replace basically all of the cards, and we're still looking at the pricing on that from our vendor.
So it would be within the existing borrowing capacity?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. It's probably about $250,000 to $300,000 altogether.
Okay. Do you know what your, either market share or penetration rate is in Concord, and what the sort of runway might look like based on that?
The system is sized today to be able to support 2,500 to 3,000 customers of the size that we have now. That would represent 35% to 40% of our residential install base if we got there, and so we're, we're expecting that we probably are going to be in a, in a three-way split between the existing cable supplier, wireless customers who may choose to do that, and fiber. So, we're, we're sort of anticipating about a third of the market. Yes?
Do you have any kind of a plan or program to reach out to? Do you have any plan or program to reach out to commercial customers that are maybe landlords that own a building or two, and they like suggest everybody in the building get Comcast? Is there anything to reach out to?
We've been working with some of the, some of the commercial and residential property, you know, multi-dwelling units, and we have, for new development, we, we get in and try to, try to plan that alongside of them. For some of the older, particularly residential environments, there's some construction that needs to be done, and so that, that usually means an investment on the part of the property owners. So we, we try to guide them in terms of how they might do that. At this stage of the game, we don't have enough, essentially, free cash to, to do that kind of on spec, so we need to be careful about, about conserving that.
Mark, do you have any information about how much overlap there is among services, servers, your customers? Do any of your customers use other internet services as well? Is there an overlap there?
I think that the answer to that is yes. I mean, virtually everybody has a wireless plan, you know, from some cellphone provider, which is one of the coming arms of competition in ours, in our environment. We have, almost all customers are coming off of an existing contract, either a DSL contract or a cable contract, and so a lot of them go to overlapping. Some of them choose to maintain the video services. I didn't do the service description this time, but we only do high-speed data services, and so for some people, certain elements of the, of the video services remain attractive, and so they continue to do that. Increasingly, we're seeing that services like Google TV, for example, are, you know, a replacement that a streaming customer can use to get virtually everything they would have gotten, so I'm seeing less of that, but we do see some customers who choose both. On the business side, especially if it's mission-critical for your business, we would always recommend that, you know, two internet connections is, is really what, what a business that's dependent on the internet should be doing, and we feel like we can be one of those connections for any business in town.
Hi, Harry Ackerman, HGN News, Detroit. My question's for you and also for Dave. Both of you talk about small net income. I think Dave, it's up to 2.3% of the debt. My question is, what happens with that revenue? Does it go into the following year? Is operating revenue sort of changing?
Things or investment program?
In our case, any net income that we receive, positive net income, actually reduces our, our overall negative position, so in the budget book, it details exactly how much money we essentially still owe, so we're using that to pay back startup costs. I don't know if Dave wants to answer the question on the light plant side, but I, go ahead.
So, the 2.3% that you're referring to, that gets put into, it could get put back into the system, into the capital outlay, essentially gets put in unrestricted, an unrestricted fund, and we're working on a policy with the Light Board right now on an unrestricted fund balance, so.
So is it part of this other revenue for the, in the pie chart of the operating revenue?
No. No, the return is just when you take the difference between the revenue and the expenses.
Oh, I mean, the following year, does it go in as operating revenue?
It, no, it would, we could use it for the capital outlay, and that's where you would see it.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, so on the chart, it looks like the investment that you're making on the expense line for 2019 actually accelerates revenues in 2019, and hopefully beyond. Have you put some numbers on those, those revenue increases?
Yeah, it's about 19% revenue increase, and that's based, it's pretty much a straight line. We have managed to add between 250 and 300 subscriptions each year, and so we've planned for approximately the same number of subscriptions to be added this year as we've added in the last three years. And on the budget book, on page 3-17, you can see our net position is actually improving. So in 2019, we're projecting a net position of negative $222,000, where in 20, at the end of 2018, we estimated it to be negative $232,000. So we, we would need a few more years of positive net income in order to just get back to, to zero, which is certainly where we'd like to be.
Returning to the question that was asked previously, the change in net position on the electric, the municipal light plant is $1.4 million. Can you just explain what the, what the numbers on page 3-8, which is the net position, does that represent a cash balance or an unrestricted fund balance of some sort? It's a rather large number, like $50 million.
So that takes into account the, the entire system that we have, the whole capital outlay.
So that's all the poles and the?
Yeah.
It's everything.
It's everything.
But, but what you're accruing and have been accruing since the numbers that are being shown here is, is actually cash dollars, and it's, you're, you're running a positive balance, and so your balance is increasing. Is there a way? Is there a way we can understand how much of that is, in effect, investable cash on hand that you can put back into the infrastructure and how much of it is actually the book value of your infrastructure?
So looking at that page, the change in net position for that year, that 1.4, that's what we're expecting to have as cash at the end of the year that we could put back into the system, but we could use it for a number of things.
So it's added to some account. Is there a place where we can find out what the balance of that account is? Because it's hard for the, I asked this question last year at the same meeting and, and it's very difficult to understand when we see a, a very large number like $50 million that, and then you describe it as that's our, that's the, that's the full value of, of, of the light plant infrastructure. And I, I do understand that, but you've accrued 1.4 million this year and it would be nice to see, you know, a distinction made between what's, you know, physical assets and what's actually the, what's your cash balance year to year. That'd just be a good extra piece of data for us to understand.
Yeah. We have, yeah, we have that information in the light, light budget.
Yeah. I was just mentioning to Dave, the light board sees a more detailed version of, of all of this that comes out in the, in the budget book that's presented to them in, in their public meetings. So that's really the place where they kind of get down into what, what are the nature of the, of the funds.
The other thing that I'd like to add to that too is, you know, I mentioned our fund balances and setting up policies and we're doing that essentially for this so that we'll have a guideline to follow. We've never had one. And in that unrestricted funds, there's over eight million in there.
Okay, so that's a number that's just not in this book.
Yes, it's not in this.
Eight million in unrestricted funds. That's kind of what I was asking and, and thank you.
Right. So we're, we're working through that. We had a consultant do a, a study for us and now we are in the process of getting ready to recommend a policy to the board for consideration and then we'll know, do we draw that down to X amount and what do we do with that extra cash?
Thanks. Does the town have 10 million? Yeah. Light plant has a lot of money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask one last question? Telecom question? Has the time to connect come down? My recollection was a couple of years ago, it was like two or three months, which is seems like an eternity without, you know, connectivity these days.
I'd like, I'd like to say yes, it has. We, we are doing better. We're, we're maybe not as, as fast as we'd like to be. We tend to remind people that we are actually bringing it an entirely new service into your home. It's not just flipping on something from a wire that's already been there. So we are working on that and that's one of the reasons for going to another, adding another telecom tech. So the time to connect is down. It's probably about a month. Again, what we do tend, we are usually replacing a service. So what we talk to people about is call us up, bring us in, we'll, we'll, we'll let you know when you're connected. Once you are connected, that is the time to disconnect your other service. Do not disconnect and then call us because you may.
See, I learned the hard way.
Yeah, you may be very unhappy about that experience. So we do, we have actually, you know, tried to focus somewhat on situations like new move-ins and construction and so forth. So if somebody really doesn't have service at all, we, we will try to prioritize that and we, and we trust that our customers understand why we do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. And now if Mr. Robinson would address us about Article 39.
Thank you very much, Rod Robinson, Concord Public Works. And let, first of all, I thank my coworker Paul Reinhardt for all his help with the budget there as always. Going to begin tonight with a brief overview of the town's curbside program. As we all know, the town has a pays-as-you-throw program. There are a lot of different definitions on pays-as-you-throw. I like to simply explain the pays-as-you-throw program as a program that encourages recycling and discourages a generation of trash. The EPA basically indicates and has stated that pays-as-you-throw programs generate basically 27% less trash per household than non-pays-as-you-throw programs. A nice example you can see in the budget book is the per ton, you know, per tonnage, numbers there of house, per household of Concord versus Bedford. Bedford is non-pays-as-you-throw, they're generating approximately 0.88 tons per subscriber. Where in Concord, we're, we're at 0.74. So quite, quite a difference there. We're in good company too on that. If you look at the most recent statistics on the DEP website, there's approximately 147 pays-as-you-throw communities right now in the Commonwealth. It's a fee-based program. We'll be looking at the, the fee in two slides from now. Weekly collection with waste management. And we've got a dual-stream recycling program in town. I could really go on and on about our dual-stream recycling program, but I did want to touch on a, a couple of, of the, of the highlights in particular. One of the, the nice things about the dual-stream programs, one of the, one of the real strong benefits is you have a very low contamination rate. Right now, I'm, I'm sure a lot of you have heard over the past year or so in particular, there's a lot of single-stream communities out in the Commonwealth that have been hit with some really significant contamination charges. Newton had publicity recently, there was, they paid in excess of $100,000 over a 15-month period, not, not too long back. Most recently also Framingham had some publicity on that too, a number of other communities as well. Concord has, has had no contamination charges at all imposed by our haul, our real, real nice benefit of the program. Another nice benefit of our dual-stream program right now is the costs we have in our contract with waste management. Very, very cost-effective program right now on the recycling end there. We're basically paying $25 per tonne to process paper and $32 per tonne to process commingled materials. So we're basically looking at a total processing fee for both those combined of $57 per tonne. Those are per tonne costs I just gave you. As an example, what we hear in, in the industry right now is that single-stream communities that are signing contracts with haulers right now are paying $85 per tonne for processing their single-stream recycling. So, you know, that's basically 50% more, almost 50% more than, than the town is paying right now for processing. So a real, real nice benefit of dual-stream. The other beauty of dual-stream too is we really keep that paper clean. Because of that, we have a very nice paper rebate program that we're able to pass along to subscribers in the form of a rebate when the paper market is strong. So as we're really, this year in particular, we're very, very fortunate, we feel, to have our dual-stream program. The program is very economical. We're going to look at the economics in three slides from now when we compare the curbside program rates against the competition. Very environmentally sound and again, this is another topic I could really expand on in great detail on there. Pays-as-you-throw programs, as we know, are very environmentally friendly in themselves where they encourage recycling and discourage the generation of trash. But one of the components, one of the many components, I should say, of the curbside program is a semi-annual drop-off swap-off event. If you look at some of the numbers, some of the statistics from the program, some of the items we've collected for recycling, it's just really some staggering figures. Since even such of the drop-off swap-off program back in FY '98, the town has collected over 7,000 bags of styrofoam for recycling, more than 1,600 mattresses, more than 500 tonnes of construction and demolition material, more than 400 tonnes of electronics. I could go on and on. It really, it's a great, great program there. And that's just one of the programs we have. We also have business recycling programs, a bike giveaway coming up on May 16th and other, other programs as well. So stay tuned. And lastly, on the slide here, the town right now has a 39% recycling rate, one of the higher rates in the, in the state currently. This slide right here, basically if you look at the top line there, the blue line, that is a line that represents all the tonnes of municipal solid waste that have been collected on the curbside program since its inception. And one thing is important to note here too, the number of subscribers in the town's curbside program continues to increase year after year. We've never started a fiscal year with less subscribers than we ended with the year before. And that blue line basically reflects that increase in subscribers generally speaking over, over the long run there. Currently, for the last fiscal year, FY '18, we ended the year with 3,671 subscribers. We've already added 28 subscribers to that. We're currently at 3,699. So again, we continue to, to climb. The red line right there represents all of the tonnes of recyclables collected on the curbside program since its inception. And you'll see a, a drop there from FY '08 to FY '10, a pretty significant drop and then gradual reduction right down through FY '15, then things kind of level off, you'll see, starting in FY '17 and FY '18. Very common trend folks, and I actually explained that, that drop there particularly from FY ' '08 to FY '10 is a very positive thing. It's actually referring to source reduction. If you look at the difference of where we are now, where we were, you know, 10, 10 years ago, back in FY '08, back in FY '10, a lot of changes in, in, in the industry, a lot more online transactions. You look at the size of the Boston Sunday Globe, far smaller than it once was. Online, online magazines, you've got eco-friendly bottles, a whole, whole gamut of, of, whole list of items there. I could really expand in more detail. But I will say that if you look at that line, that, that trend there is very representative of other communities in, in, in the state also. Carlisle, for example, Lexington. Interesting, you know, our recyclables here, if you look at FY '18, we had 1,720 tonnes of recyclables there. That was up, up four tonnes from FY '17. And Lexington actually had a reduction. They actually had a 7.6% reduction from, from 2017 to 2018. So it's, it was interesting coming across that too, where we had a little, little bump there. But again, that red line is pretty general, you know, pretty representative of all the other, other communities out there when you look at the various, various towns. This slide right here basically represents the, the curbside fee for FY '20. You can see we're at $272. That's about a $10 increase over, over the FY '19 rate. Disposal fees remain the same at 150 a tag. The average cost of the program for the average curbside subscriber who puts out 1.36 bags or barrels of trash is $378.08. Next slide coming up, we're going to see how that compares against the competition. The, so overall, that $10 increase I just mentioned from 262 to 272 represents a 3.8% increase, but when you look at the disposal and factor disposal in, it's only a 2.7% increase. So this slide here, this basically depicts the town's program against the competition. You can see our FY '20 rates again here, 378.08 for the average subscriber. If you look at the lowest cost private hauler, Mr. Trashman and Mero and Son, they charge more than $100, more than $100 over the curbside program. On the next slide, we're going to get into some benefits and advantages of the curbside program, benefits and advantages that the private haulers are not able to pass on to their customers. So you can see it's really a great, great value there. If you look at that $100 another way, it's, it's basically it's 27% more. So Mr. Trashman and the lower-cost haulers are charging a minimum of 20% more, 27% more than, than the town charges curbside subscribers and it only goes up from there. As you can see, Barry Brothers charging even, even more than that. So benefits and advantages, and again folks, these are some benefits and advantages that the private haulers are not able to share with their subscribers, with, with their customers there. One of the big ones is the Minuteman Hazardous Waste Pass. That's a really good value. You can see it's a $60 value. All curbside subscribers in the program are entitled to one free pass to the Minuteman site. A real nice feature of that too is that when Concord Public Works hosts a hazardous waste collection event, the curbside subscribers can use their hazardous waste pass, that annual pass for our event instead. Last year, we had a very successful hazardous waste collection event. We had 212 curbside subscribers attended that. Really was our highest attendance ever. Really, really great, great value. As we discussed earlier, another benefit is that subscribers are only paying disposal costs for what they threw away and competition doesn't have that. You know, curbside subscribers, if they're going on sabbatical, they're taking a vacation, they're not going to be around for a week or two, they don't pay disposal costs when, when they're not in town. And that in itself is, is an economic incentive. I mentioned previously there, a little while back, there was a paper rebate when the paper market is strong. We look forward to hopefully when the market rebounds in the future, being able to offer that at once again to subscribers. It's been a very, very big component of our program in the past. Flexible disposal, residents can put barrel, a barrel or a bag of trash out, there's, there's no limit. Semi-annual billing, online payment option. Basically, it's two semi-annual bills of 136 each per year for, for curbside subscribers. And as we saw on the previous slide, the cost savings are pretty significant when you look at the cost of the town's program overall versus out of the competition. So looking beyond FY '20, right now, going into FY '20 will be year four of a five-year extension to the town's contract with waste management. Beyond, beyond FY '20, I should say, right, right now, actually, we're, we're delving into the early stages, preliminary research for a new solid waste recycling contract that will best fit the needs of the curbside program in, in beyond FY '21 there. So the current contract runs for almost another 20, just shy of another 28 months there or so. We'll be spending a lot of time on that in the weeks and months ahead there. You know, preliminary research basically will include a very extensive hauler survey of all the haulers in northeastern Mass and our section of the state there, along with polling all the nearby, in, in some not-so-n nearby communities also. The last time we, our procurement process, we polled upwards of 100 different communities there, finding out about their programs, comparing ours to theirs, looking at the various, you know, recycling and solid waste disposal options. And the compost site also is managed by our office. It's a part of the, of the curbside program also. So the next slide basically covers some of the highlights of the compost site. Opens on April 6th, right around the corner here. Opens in, the hours are Saturdays from 9:00 to 3:00. Wednesdays also from 3:00 to 6:00. Had a very successful pilot program for Wednesdays there. We got some great feedback from residents there. And based on the success of the, of the pilot program, the Wednesday hours are now a permanent part of the program there. Last year, just a very high, high attendance at the compost site. There were over 13,000 visits last year alone for the compost site there. Really high, high attendance there. Paint shed, last year was a busy year for the paint shed too. The paint shed provides a great opportunity for residents to dispose and recycle old latex as well as oil-based paint. Last year, residents brought in 492 gallons of paint. They took away 177 gallons of paint for reuse there. Really, we're one of the few towns around that has that. Sometimes other towns will reach out to us and see if, if they can go and we say, we're sorry. We, we need to restrict it to, to Concord residency. I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but I'm going to get into that in just a second here too. I was going to mention there was a public hearing back on February 13th hosted by our office and the Public Works Commission there. There were two initiatives that were discussed and one was a brush fee reduction. The brush fees were formerly $5 per load. We did a lot of research over the past year and we had some input from, from residents too. And another very, it was a very successful thing I, I think to do and it really worked out well. We basically, we looked at a number of different compost sites in other towns to see how, how they were handling their operations, whether or not they were charging a fee. We, we looked at Acton, Carlisle, Lincoln, Lexington, for example, there. And none of them, none of those compost sites were, were charging a fee there. And we looked at the, at the fact that we were, and we also looked at our disposal costs over the past years. Our disposal costs for brush were very, in some years, there were the past several years, it's really been zero cost, very low cost for us based on the, on the current demand for, for wood chips there. So in, in light of that, in that the, you know, overall, that it really wasn't, wasn't costing the town much at all. That and a combination of other reasons, we, we basically made the, the recommendation at the hearing to basically reduce the brush fees to zero for the benefit of the residents. So I think that really was a, a, a great program. We've got some great feedback and appreciation from residents on that. We want to encourage residents to bring their brush to the compost site and I think that'll certainly be a proactive measure to, to do that. And on the same note, on the same hearing I mentioned, the public hearing back on February 13th there, another initiative that was discussed and also voted on was to implement a no-cost compost site sticker for, for residents there. This is going to be a very user-friendly program. Again, it's no cost. And the, the purpose for this was the, the attendance working at the compost site, past year in particular, they've noticed an up, an increase, an uptick in the number of non-residents trying to get access to the compost site. And it's always been a challenge too, keeping contractors out. You know, ultimately there, if there's non-residents going to the compost site, it's, it's increasing wait times for, for Concord residents, but it's also increasing the town's costs. So as a proactive measure, we decided, it was voted that night there, the Public Works Commission there, to implement a no-cost compost site sticker program for residents. It's going to be very user-friendly. It's going to kick off on April 6th, the first day, and the stickers will be issued at the compost site. The attendant will be. The tenant will be issuing them at the compost site during the regular hours on Saturdays and Wednesdays, and they'll also be available at our office at Concord Public Works as well. The stickers have been ordered there, but we know they'll definitely be available for the compost site on April 6th there and possibly before, depending on the timing there, we may be able to get a jump start on that at our office and distribute some stickers too late March or early, early April too there. So stay tuned, there'll be more, more ahead on that. I'd be glad to take any questions.
I understand you to say 39% was high for the Commonwealth, but it sounds a little low for an enlightened community. Is there some initiative or effort to get that number appreciably higher? Are there any other towns that have been more successful that we can look to for guidance?
That's a great question there. And I say, you know, when I mentioned 39%, it's interesting, the DEP is actually kind of, even though we still include that in our reporting there, the Mass DEP has actually kind of moved away from that, from the recycling rate as a benchmark, so to say. And they're now focusing more on tons per, generated per household there. It's similar to, you know, we put that in the budget book there for that reason there. One of the things we're looking at, and I think one of the, to answer your question too about an increase in that recycling rate there, one of the things we're going to be exploring, and I think there's some good potential for, is food waste composting there. I think there's some good potential on that down the horizon. One of the things we're doing on our end on that, we're very actively selling compost bins to residents so they can compost their food waste at home. So that's one initiative we're looking at. One of the programs we're actually going to be exploring right now is a possibility of a, what we call a compost bin giveaway program. And we're looking at that possibly for this fall. We're kind of researching that right now to see if it might be something that might be feasible. But the thought is that we may be able to obtain grant funding to purchase some compost bins and basically have a giveaway for compost bins, similar to our bike giveaway program coming up in May as a way to encourage, you know, food, food waste composting.
So the paper rebate worked when newsprint prices or box prices got to a certain point that generated more revenue for someone in the food chain, and that was rebated back to the consumer? Is that correct?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
So the paper rebate was created when newsprint or box prices got to a certain point, price per ton or pound?
Correct.
That resulted in profitability to someone in the food chain that they shared with, back with us. Would the same occur for aluminum or plastic prices if the raw material costs go up so that somewhere in the food chain, someone is making more money out of it?
Yes.
Would those potentially be rebated back to us?
You know, that's a, that's a great question. I'd love to say yes.
You can.
The challenge with that is that when you look at the, at the commodity pricing there, you know, the paper historically has been way up here, and you mentioned aluminum and some other commodities there. Well, that percentage, the aluminum can percentage on our, on the recycling tons that we have is, for example, way, way down here compared to paper way up here. So in the past, when we've done that rebate, it's always been more on the paper. Kind of hard to determine a value overall on that commingled material because there's so many different components. You've got plastic milk jugs, you've got aluminum. So there's something that we, and I'll put it this way, to answer your question too, we don't write off anything, we don't put blinders on. It is something we could certainly explore and look into in the future at our contract negotiation upcoming in the future. It is something we actually will be talking with the haulers about. But as I said, historically, it's always been the paper, it's really been the revenue generator when the market was really, when the paper market was strong. But good, very good question.
The swap-off is amazing environmentally. Did I understand you to say that it generates net revenue to the town also? Does it make money?
The swap-off?
Swap-off.
No, the swap-off is, I explained it as a free, give and take flea market there. No.
I know exactly what it is. Oh, yeah. But with all the recycled materials, I was wondering if the?
Drop-off.
The drop-off part, yeah. The drop-off part is what I meant.
The drop-off.
Sorry, yeah.
The drop-off, basically the drop-off is set up, and the answer is yes, it does generate revenue. However, the revenue, the way the event is set up, it's really a break-even event. So it's always set up, because we want to keep, the goal was really to keep those fees affordable for residents there. We want to have a good value for residents there. So you look at the history of that event there, it's really our big goal, and in talking with our partners, we use it there, who are just a great partner. They provide all the volunteers, and they have the same philosophy too, it's a shared philosophy. It's really just to break even rather than generate a profit. And typically, if you look at the numbers historically, it is basically a break, break-even event there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
One final question, I guess. What's your percentage of coverage in the market of households that could subscribe? What percentage do you actually capture?
Sure. We take a, kind of keep a close look at that. Right now, I would say currently, you know, right around 65%. We're always looking to increase that too, but in that, in the 65% range there, be pretty, pretty accurate. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Now we'll hear from Mr. Cathcart, who will tell us about sewer system expenditures under Article 40.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, may I do the order sequence? I always like to do the water first, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
I believe that would be Article 42. And as I speak, I brought some Concord finest up here. I had a meeting recently in a neighboring community, and I didn't have any water available. I got dry mouth. It's the first time I've ever had that speaking. It was the worst experience in my life, so back up. Okay, water serves about 95% of the community. Article 42 is a routine article which we have, which allows the, let me get this, let me get the right notes in front of me. It's just routine authorizing the funding of the water system, you know, for the next year through user fees and other department income. I'm going to go through, usually I blow through these slides, the first two, but the program objectives, where when we deal with compliance with the regulatory and statutory requirements, is becoming increasingly important responsibility that we have. A lot of our energy and resources are invested in understanding the regulatory trends and trying to ensure that our system will comply. And that's increasingly involved with capacity issues and withdrawals as well as water quality. As far as the serving current and future needs of Concord, that's been particularly important to the town of Concord, and I'll sort of reference a little bit, the value of some of our assets, most notably Nagog Pond. The water system presently has, our assets are about $21.7 million. You can see we have a combination of surface water, that's Nagog Pond, six groundwater supplies, pumping stations, we have some advanced treatment, a couple reservoirs for storage and pressure, and over 134 miles of distribution main. As far as the capital plan goes, we're looking at a significant capital plan of over $17 million, long time coming, where we've allocated over $11 million towards the construction of Nagog Treatment Plant. We are looking at over $2 million to replace the Nagog intake. I will note, while looking up some information recently on a sewer service issue from the mid-1980s, I came across minutes from the Public Works Commission, which were deciding who was going to present the article about the Nagog intake replacement. That was 1985. It hasn't been replaced yet. We have over $1.3 million identified for water main replacement, which I'll sort of note, we actually have authorization for borrowing, I'll mention after this presentation. We have had to downgrade our reservoir rehabilitation of both the Nurse Neck and Pine Hill, basically because we're putting a lot of money towards Nagog. But the rehabilitation is more of a 10 to 20-year rehab rather than what we were hoping for was 30 to 50 years. Meter reading upgrade, a very important program. Very few things we do, you can actually see and see the result of these improvements. This is an initiative that we're going to be working with the municipal light plant. It's going to enable us to upgrade the meter reading technology, which will allow us to remotely collect data. The meter reads on a monthly basis. This is going to get embedded into a more sophisticated billing and collection, a software system that we're going to be investing in next year. And ultimately, it's going to give our customers greater frequency of bills as well as information if they want to look online and potentially see their use over time through their own convenience. So that's a very exciting program that we are looking to, you know, offer along with municipal light plant. The station structures are, as I said, we had over six groundwater supplies, and that's some of the improvements that we're looking at, most notably is the replacement of a chemical storage tank over at the Second Division well. As far as our O and M, we are looking at close to $5 million proposed expenditures. I note, you know, about 50% of that is assigned to depreciation as well as contributions to the general fund. To be clear, we utilize a lot of services through the town from other departments, and as an enterprise system, we are accountable for that. Here is a breakdown, at least pie chart, of where our operating expenditures go, and you can see the significant depreciation, the personal services is also significant. It all boils down to, as an enterprise, our costs have to be balanced by our revenues and what we're proposing, and I will, it's notable, this year, we're looking at a 5% increase across the board. I'm showing the residential rates. What's important is that we have historically been able to lower the rates. When I first got here, there was a 5% every year. That's what we had, because we really didn't have a master plan or capital plan at the time. But within the budget books, you'll actually see, there's a beautiful 10-year pro forma, which really maps out all of our financial expenditures and borrowing and capital improvements. And it really is an important tool that we have in Concord. When I talk to my brethren out there in the industry, very few people have the same tool, and it provides real power to the town so we can look at long-term, how are our investments going and what is our revenue stream? And because we have a 10-year pro forma, we can look at our rate structure and be able to forecast what the needs are so that we don't have rate shock, and it's really important. We've been fortunate over the last few years to keep the rates around 3%, but basically with the significant improvements and investments at Nagog, we're looking at 5% for next year. It is important to note, we have a conservation rate. This is seasonal. It's very important as we talk about demand management, where you can see the cost, we're going from, it's, you know, 5 cents per cubic foot, a little 5 and 1/2 cents, to over 15 cents per cubic foot when you're spending for what we call the premium water during the summer, where our system is most taxed. And generally speaking, it's for outdoor water use, discretionary use. So it's important to help send a price signal as well as try and keep the base rate reasonable for all. You can see how we compare to other communities or similar communities in the area, and we're chest over, you can see Concord, we're at about $400 per year. I have a similar slide for sewer, and I'll tell you, that's about $600 per year. I'm going to have a quick trivia question. Actually, not trivia question, interesting point of interest. Bob Hill was working with me on some of these, these costs and looking at comparisons across the country. We found that Flint, Michigan, has some of the highest water and sewer rates in the country. Go figure. You can see the distribution profile of our customer base, 56% are residential. We have 24% commercial, institutional, mixed use. You see, we have a correction facility, hospital. It really points to the necessity and need for us to be able to plan for the future, have a reliable, safe supply, because there are regional benefits to the water supply that we, the water service we provide. Fortunately, most people's opinions are very favorable. People seem to think, you know, I'm okay saying it's not good bargain, because, you know, water is a valuable asset and commodity, and it costs a lot to protect and treat and distribute the water. Most people unfortunately look at it as a reasonably priced commodity, and there are messages where some people believe it's excessively priced. And I really think it depends on where you fit on the spectrum as far as, generally speaking, the seasonal high use or not. We are seeing sort of a tail of two customers right now. So if you have an in-ground irrigation system, you probably are seeing some of that impact. As far as the rating of the water service, we're very proud to show that for the most part, people believe it's excellent, with, you know, a large majority excellent or good, and that's encouraging. So in essence, that's an overview of the water system expenditures. I'll entertain any questions people may have on the water system.
Hi, Phil Swain from the Finance Committee. Alan, what is, can you summarize where things stand with Nagog Pond and our dispute with Acton and Littleton?
Okay. In the town of Acton, for those who aren't completely, sort of, you know, following all the trials and tribulations, we have been in a permitting process and planning process to design, permit, and construct a water treatment facility at Nagog Pond. It's presently unfiltered. We've maintained a federal filtration waiver for 30 years. We have decided, after some land swaps, working collaboratively with Acton 15 years ago, after getting our fund balance healthy, where we talk about what do people do with the capital reserve and that sort of thing, it's there to help offset some of these major costs. We've been through a very protracted permitting process in Acton. We're trying to cite a treatment facility on Concord land that butts Nagog Pond. And over the past five years, there's been a lot of consternation about Concord's plan to proceed with the development of this treatment facility, would allow us to realize, in essence, a withdrawal that we have benefited from for over 100 years. And there's been opportunists who have looked at, you know, can we look at this as an opportunity to say, is there any benefit to Acton? Does Acton have any potential rights to the water? But more importantly, they've been a permitting entity, and we've had to go through their permitting process through a special site plan permit process with the select board. We've worked with the Acton Conservation Commission, and we've met a lot of resistance from directed butters to the facility. The concerns have been potential impact on their new homes. We started the planning process before these homes were constructed, but now we have, in essence, a butters who are frustrated that Concord's going to proceed with constructing a treatment facility. The irony is, it's a very small, relatively speaking, footprint, which introduces significant cost to the town of Concord to maintain that small footprint, because we don't have a lot of land around us. And when they developed Quail Ridge, there wasn't a reasonable buffer that was put, despite comments from Concord that we were going to construct this facility, be mindful of that. We went out of our way to try and make sure that we were clear and transparent as far as our process. So the permitting activities that we've gone through have been extraordinary. So the permitting activities that we've gone through have been extraordinary and lengthy. And the challenge with that is it has significantly increased the cost to design and construct this facility significantly, millions of dollars because of the delay. We're working through that. We're in the final stages of design. The plan is to proceed with the construction this, after this coming summer. There's a few more permits we need to get there at the state level. But in essence, some of the residents have volunteered. They're really looking to do whatever they can to delay and potentially prevent us from proceeding. So that's the Acton account. In Littleton, Littleton Water Department has done some exploration for water, and they found bedrock wells very close to NAGOG Pond, within 1,500 feet. Bedrock wells are 600 feet deep. They have a yield of potentially half a million gallons a day. And the hydrogeology, we believe, lends itself to a hydraulic interconnection between the reservoir, our pond, and these wells. And Concord has been on record to sort of highlight our concern early on. This goes back to, I think, 2011 or so. Littleton's proceeded. They've invited new industry to the community. They've had a lot of economic growth and development, including a new bottling plant, which they are eager to serve, a very significant demand of over a half million gallons a day from this bottling facility. So they are proceeding very aggressively with not just challenging whether they have an impact on NAGOG Pond, which was our responsibility to flag through the regulatory process, but they've now challenged the whole idea of the water rights from NAGOG Pond. And it is very complicated. There's a long history, and we are working through presently land court to try and determine differences between enabling legislation, regulatory, and statutory changes in the state, which deal with water management. And so in essence, we've been kind of wrestling with this water rights question for about a year now with Littleton, who's been very aggressive, which took it to the point where we needed a court to, you know, try and determine where we stand. So that's active as we speak. So sorry for the long-winded explanation, but that is literally a very brief snapshot of a very complex and convoluted process.
So tying in with that, Mr. Cathcart, how do our current and projected needs meet our safe yield? Dovetail with our safe yield.
I'm going to go, there's a lot of slides I have just in case, but I think this is an important one if you kind of look over, over on that monitor. So what you see is a series of bars where there's an average day demand, that's over the course of a year. Now, obviously, the demand is cyclical. Most people use more water in the summer than winter. But on average, it's about 2 million gallons a day. In the winter, it drops down to a low of about 1.6 million. In the summer, you'll see on average, it's about 2.5 million gallons. And then during peak day, and in essence, when I say peak day, it's usually for extended periods. We may get a week of higher demand, particularly when it's, and I'm saying this to not just this audience, but anybody watching, when it's hot and dry for an extended periods of time, please throttle back on your water demand because that is the exact time we are most challenged. And we have the ability to buffer for a very short period of time a peak demand, primarily for fire protection and that sort of thing. But the drier it is, the longer the period of time, the more we really urge you to be as responsible as you can be as far as your water use. So on this chart, I will, let's see, I can kind of point out, I have a pointer here, and I, I don't know, I can go up here. But this line right here up top is with all our supplies in NAGOG, the blue line you see running. We have the ability for a peak capacity of about 3.7 million gallons a day. You'll see that's less than what is necessary for days at a time when it's very hot, very dry, and we have extreme demands. For average summer, it's okay. But if we, and this is with NAGOG, if we throttle to what we really need to and can sustainably run, if every source is operable, we're looking at about 3.2 million gallons. And that's that green line in the middle. And you can see, we can't sustain any real peak demand. We do meet the average day, but that allows us no flexibility, no free board for any compromise of any supply, whether it's mechanical or quality. We can't turn them off. That's 24 hours, seven days a week. And if you look at the lowest line, that's the sustainable capacity if we assume one of our larger sources is offline, then you can see even then, we are looking at meeting average summer demand, but not anywhere near peak daily demand. And of course, the, an argument would be if we could use what we use in winter all year long, we'd be fine. But that's just completely unrealistic, and there's no water use profile out there that I'm aware of that would, you know, show you that it's a constant use unless it's a business or something like that. So that's very important. And then I'm going to sort of just use the same, I'm going to go ahead to, I'm going to go back. I have, I'm ready for anything here, so. This is the same table without NAGOG Pond. It's a much more dire situation. And the issue with NAGOG Pond, why it's so important, unlike groundwater wells that really are restricted on a daily basis because of the hydrogeology, you're drawing water from sands and gravels. You really can't regulate that too much. You may go from a couple hundred gallons a minute to maybe 400 gallons a minute. NAGOG is a bowl, it's a reservoir. And we are designing it so that in a day, under peak demand, we can actually operate at 1.5 million gallons a day. We may do that for a week or two, and then we can throttle it down to half a million gallons a day. It's, surface water supplies operate very differently than groundwater, and that's why it's so important when we identify is NAGOG as a very important asset and resource to the town of Concord because it gives you that flexibility that no other supply offers. And since we've been, we haven't been operating NAGOG since the waiver 30 years ago in the same way that we had previously, we're really starting to compromise our wells. The groundwater wells are losing yield. They require more maintenance. They require cleaning more frequently just from sediment and iron and manganese that sort of binds up the screens. And we've been overrelying on the groundwater supply for the past 20 years. So that's why NAGOG's so important. But I believe that answers the question as far as the, how that fits into our.
Is there a plan to develop any further groundwater wells? Do you have access to the October Farm area? I think there's a wellhead up there, but there's no development.
Correct. So maybe, I don't know, it was 10 years ago. I've been here over 20 years. I'm starting to lose the decades. But we did procure land, excuse me, up off of Balls Hill Road to have on reserve for future development. The good news is, we own the land. The town's well aware of the intent of that land. It complements open space, conservation land directly above it. We're great neighbors for that sort of use. That is realistically, based on experience, we see it could potentially get a capacity of a million gallons a day, but realistically, a half a million gallons a day. We still would have to pump it and identify what the quality is. We likely have to treat that water. And again, unlike NAGOG, if we were to develop that for half a million gallons, it's going to be limited to about that on a max day. And that really is a, a final kind of fallback. But again, when we plan, we're planning for 50 years. So I imagine within the next 50 years, someone else will be here looking at, hopefully someone else will be.
Can I ask, what's the difference between the million gallons per day in the winter and in the summer? What are the uses that determine that million gallon per day difference? It must be lawns.
Primarily outdoor watering, yes. And there are lots of policies. It's a good opportunity to talk about that. Out there at the state, literally is a brand-new draft of the state drought plan that's been developed by the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs, EEA, that will likely impose restrictions to all communities, I will note with the exception of MWRA, that will have to have more frequent responses, more frequent declarations of droughts, and more sticks as far as what you need to do in response to a drought. And right now, the only thing, the only entity out there that does anything significant is water supply, which means you may need to throttle back on your demand. And the demand management is going to be the burden of the water department to go out and become water cop.
Do we serve the prison?
Yes, yes, we do. I'm not going to be water cop there, though.
Jane Hotchkiss, Concord Select Board, but speaking as a resident, although I have enjoyed many hours with Alan discussing NAGOG. How do private wells, what percentage of our water use, our residential water use in Concord is private? And how does the town interact with that? I mean, clearly, it's one aquifer. We're all pulling from that space. I'm looking at, you know, peak day demand. That's just the town's section of that. How do we, how does the water, how do we manage that?
Presently, private wells are sort of the orphan to water supply. Statewide, there's increasing attention and awareness that, you know, what and how do you manage and regulate these wells? You're starting to deal with water right issues that are kind of beyond, you know, Acton, Littleton, Concord have their own challenges. But when you're talking about water rights and private property, it's a whole other deal. And I think right now, the challenge is at the State House, you know, who should be responsible, who can be responsible? You know, Concord has, you know, there are many customers who have actually gotten off the town water system and gone on to their own private well because it's basically a cost benefit. They look, as our rates go up, is the cost of water in the summers so much more significant? They look at the cost of installation of a well and then not having any kind of constraints or restrictions. And I think it's ultimately a question on private property. And it's something which I hear a lot. I'm very cautious as far as presently, local boards of health have some controls over wells and private wells on private property. But it is, it's a challenge, and I think there's no easy answer to how are you going to manage that? But it is on the state radar. There's no question about it.
Can you go back to slide nine for one second? That's a good first crack, I think, at benchmarking. It compares the average bills, I believe, for the towns.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But do the.
I'm sorry, I'm going the wrong direction. Let me get all the way up. Many slides, just in case.
I was just going to point out, the other way to think about it is, is looking at, you know, the rates in all these towns. So maybe that's a.
Yes.
Slide for next year.
And I do agree, and we, Bob and I had that conversation, it's no longer accurate, I think, to just have one, one line. There should be those with irrigation, those without, and it might, you know, I think we're going to work on that. It's a good, good point. We also recognize the cost of water and sewer is a lot less than your cable cost for the most part, which is pretty remarkable. Okay?
Thank you.
I will now go to, while we're on water, to Article 43, just to continue on the water Okay. We're trying to, Carmen, you'll appreciate, we're trying to get our slides ready for town meeting format. And I wasn't sure because I know there's more than 100 words on this slide, so. But we're ready for anything. In essence, this is authorization to borrow $4 million towards repair, reconstruction, renovation, placement, and design costs, you know, associated with our water main distribution system. Primarily, we're looking at a way to offset some increased costs that we anticipate in the very near future on water main replacements. And the, we always talk about water main, but we've generally had an allowance of somewhere between $500, $600,000 a year, and we're accelerating that over the next couple of years. And we want to make sure that our pro forma could accommodate that increased investment. It all stems from an industry that is sort of coming through an awakening of stranded investment for decades and decades. And Concord is not alone, but the seminal document put out by American Water Works Association, Buried No Longer, was just published just a few years ago. And really, what it's identifying is aging infrastructure across the country. It's not just water, it's wastewater as well, and even stormwater, and it's becoming increasingly a challenge for everyone. I would say to Concord's benefit, you know, once you establish an enterprise system and you develop managers and finance people who can kind of look at the long-range plan, we have been having a significant investment. I'm not saying, I wouldn't say we're exactly where I would like to be, but as you show, you know, I'll show you, we're not alone. The key findings of this report are, the needs are large. That's the replacement of water mains. Household water bills will go up. There are important regional differences. New England is older. We have unusual configurations of our downtowns and infrastructure challenges as far as costs to do work in the right of way. There are differences in sizes and just the scale, economy of scale. And the costs just keep rising. And in fact, one of the challenges, you know, we've seen, and we see it at NAGOG, is the construction industry is booming, and there's a lot of work out there, a lot of construction, and the costs keep going up. And the realization is, if you postpone the investment, it's only going to get worse. And we say worse, it's generally more of a situation of, here's an example, emergency response, interruptions of service, expensive repairs. And this is a water main break on Potter Street. We've actually had two in the past year within a stretch of, you know, a couple thousand feet. It's the same pipe, 1930 cast iron pipe. All pipe isn't the same. You know, when they're manufactured, they can be a little bit different. But this has obviously come on our priority list for replacement. But you can see, it's a significant upset when you do have a break. If you go back here, I'm kind of showing you, this is a very simple GIS plan showing the age of our service. And if, hopefully, you're not, you know, if you're colorblind, I apologize. But I think what you can see is if it's yellow or orange or red, it's in essence over 50 years old. Now, I will say, not every pipe is alike. I will kind of point out, you see this red pipe here that comes down? That's all the way from NAGOG, installed in 1909 to bring water down to the center of town. It's some of the best pipe we have. And it's, you know, it's like they don't make it like they used to. I don't know. But it's a very massive pipe. We have actually been able to refurbish it, not replace it. There's technologies where you can, you know, rather than replace, this is a, you know, example of what replacement may be, putting new infrastructure in. But if you look, here's an example of some pipe, and you can see up here and that kind of down, I can't use the pointer on this, this is Mark, the technology on this, pointers, we need new technology. But up here, that's encrustation, and this is from a pipe that was removed from Concord because it was four-inch in diameter. But you can actually ream it out and put in a liner in it as a rehabilitation. And you really have to look at the. And you really have to look at the cost benefit as far as it best to refurbish or replace. And that's what we do regularly. And some technologies, they now are using kind of a plastic liner that's kind of neat. They use it in the wastewater side and drinking water side. And the key is, the less trenching you do, generally, the more economical it is and the less upset it is to the neighborhood or downtown, wherever. In essence, that is the purpose of the borrowing request. I'll take any questions on this article or water main replacement.
So public safety, I think, receives some money from the state for the fact that the prisons here, is the same, the case for water infrastructure?
Would we be prioritized for, well, so it's interesting, state and federal reservoir, there is no money other than grants or loans, loan programs, which are significant if you have a significant investment. But there really is no money available. When we talk about infrastructure, I'm actually going down to DC a week from next week to talk about water infrastructure needs and really help people understand, it's not just roads and bridges, it's the utilities underneath. And so if I can get people talking about infrastructure, roads, bridges, water, sewer, then, you know, we'll have started to make an impact. But regrettably, there really isn't assistance other than low-interest loans in Concord because of its financial health. Really, you know, if we can get a 2% loan through AAA, you know, bonding, then that's in essence, the equivalent of what the state may give you for the state revolving fund.
So how much progress do you make with the $4 million?
It's going to allow us to go into two neighborhoods over the next two years in complementing the roads program. We try to always dovetail so that we can reduce our costs. A lot of costs are just for restoring roads, if you're going into areas. But we are looking at, I do have the neighborhoods. Yeah, we have Peter Spring and Prescott Road neighborhood. That's going to be planned for FY '20. And then in FY '21, we're looking at Turner Mill, Silver Hill, Silver Hill Cross, Crest Brook area. And those are about a million, million and a half each for those. And then we do look at the roads program that Public Works is doing so we don't miss opportunities to sort of complement those. So those are, we're looking over the next three to four years of an increased level of investment.
And so will that then continue? We can expect to see?
We'll then drop back down to probably $500,000 to $600,000 a year. And basically, part of all this is to make our pro forma balance. The investment in Nagog is significant. Once we start paying off that debt, we'll start becoming more stable. And I imagine over time, I'm hoping that some technologies for rehabilitation will start becoming more popular and reduce the costs. But we do have a, it's a reasonable effort. Every time we do a replacement rehabilitation, it's a major impact to the neighborhood. We just did Alcott neighborhood and Independence, you know, very successfully. And that was a large area as well. So we've ramped up, and I would, we're going to keep our eye on investment needs for the pipe, the distribution, no question. There are no other major investments identified for treatment facilities or pump stations, not major. And this investment in Nagog is once in a, you know, 30-year period.
Thank you.
Okay, shall I go to sewer?
Please.
All right, we're getting that set up. Sewer, just to be, can remind people, where I mentioned, 95% of the town of Concord served with municipal water. About a third of the town is served by municipal sewer, and primarily in the downtown areas, the more concentrated areas of town. I've actually, historically, we've always had article, the sewer system expenditures, which again, are authorization for funding the town sewer system for the next year through combination of user fees and other department income. That's the sewer expenditures. And then we have sewer improvement fund expenditures. I'm keeping them together because this is really just a fund that we have, which we collect money for new construction, increase development to offset capacity expansion and rehabilitation to establish capacity. So they're kind of dovetailed into all under the water or the sewer fund. Just to show you as far as the area of service, if you look on the monitor, you'll see sort of the area in green kind of represents the, where we have sewer collectors. And up on the screen, it's in this area, and you can see this is the town of Concord up here. So it's primarily in the downtown sections. Excuse me. As far as the value of the, these assets, we're looking at about $16.5 million. This is where Concord Water, cold, crisp, delicious. Excuse me. We have the wastewater treatment plant, which Congress should be proud, is one of the best wastewater facilities in the area as far as its ability to treat for the constituents that really have potential adverse impacts on the environment, primarily phosphorus. We have two large pumping stations, which I will talk to, they're in need of refurbishment. Six neighborhood lift stations, 34 miles of sewer mains. Sewer is interesting, where I can say, water mains are buried at about five feet depth uniformly. They may kind of creep up and down a little bit depending on other infrastructure, stormwater. Sewer can get to over 20 feet deep. And, you know, what's important about that is, when you're talking about rehabilitation or replacement in areas where you have trenches that would have to go down 20 feet in downtown Concord, it introduces a much greater challenge and significant cost. So you really look at less invasive opportunities for the rehab of that and repairs. When you look at the operating, the O&M, we're looking at about $3 million a year. You can see, it's kind of important to note, a significant amount of the, those costs go towards the depreciation, the treatment plant, that's contract operations. We have an independent contractor actually runs that treatment facility. And then there's a significant, again, contribution to the general fund as well, again, for those services that are rendered by other departments and to the benefit of the sewer customer. You can see there's sort of the distribution of our costs and sort of the breakout from, you know, the contract management and depreciation. You're looking at over 70%, 70% of the O&M budget goes to depreciation, general fund, and contract management. As far as the capital plan, we're looking at a expenditure of $3.3 million. The most significant investments are sort of a long-anticipated rehab of the Lowell Road and Assabit Ave pump stations. They're really, I don't want to be, you know, they're kind of unremarkable from the outside. You know, that's what it looks like. But what it does inside is very important. Combination of pumps and controls in the Lowell Road station, there's actually an emergency generator tucked inside that station. The challenge is, as I talk about, compliance with regulations, safety, that sort of thing. You can no longer have operators in with emergency generator, pretty much taking up a significant part of the real estate in the building. And we'll say, the building then goes down about 40 feet. And where I talked about wastewater, it's all about gravity and gravity flow for the most part. So this has a chamber below that'll go down, you know, about 40 feet and houses very large pumps and valves below. I don't want to bypass the capital plan. Other notable investments, I would say, would be, we're ramping up our investment in inflow infiltration. That's the, I'll go to, I head to this image, which you've seen before, because really, it doesn't get particularly exciting in the wastewater world. So this shows you the kind of cracks and sources of inflow is water from stormwater that can get into the sewer system that takes up capacity of our pipes, and we actually treat with chemicals and then discharge the Concord River. And it's groundwater or stormwater, which is a very inefficient way of treating, and it also takes up capacity. And that's stormwater, and then leaks in the pipes or cracks in the pipes themselves contribute significantly, that's infiltration. And that also is something which contributes needlessly to, you know, cost for treatment. Now, systems aren't, never were designed to be 100% tight. In fact, when they were initially installed, if they leaked 50%, who cared? It wasn't expensive to treat. It was basically maybe filtration before it went to the river. So over time, we've sort of learned, no, there's cost benefit to try and reduce that. So we're going to old infrastructure and trying to tighten it and seal it and do certain things that will actually prevent groundwater or stormwater from adding, you know, to the capacity. So that's an important increase in investment. Go back to our capital plan. Wastewater planning, we still continue to work aggressively on alternatives. We're looking at an interesting, to see if we can do some sort of reuse pilot of some sort, potentially the treatment plant. Contemplating trying to do some sort of forestry work where we could use wastewater to support vegetation, trees, things that may have a reuse benefit in Concord elsewhere. So we're sort of, you know, it's an innovative concept. We'll see if we can get any regulatory or grant support. If not, you know, it's something we think it could definitely be worth exploring. Concord interest in sustainability is right there. You know, this is kind of what we're looking at. And, yeah, I think those are some of the more notable investments that we're looking at. With that said, it all comes down to, well, what's the rates and costs to the customer? You can see, in this case, we are only proposing a fairly modest 1% increase across the board. Again, we can do that because we have a 10-year pro forma that allows us to anticipate and forecast the major investments. So once we're done with Lowell Road and Assabit pump stations, those are the next two bigger investments that we have, then we don't have anything significant really to show in the next 10 years. When I say significant, multimillion dollars. As far as the comparison and benchmarking, if you look at the comparison of the sewer, again, across the board, wastewater is generally more expensive utility. It's the same in the communities that, like our neighboring communities. We see Concord is fairly competitive at about $600 a year. I will note, as far as the way our rate structure is set, we're a little bit unusual. Just worth noting that we base the sewer rate over the seasonal, the use during winter, and we prorate it over the summer to try and prevent the need for people to have other meters to say, well, I'm not using water, and it's going into the wastewater system, it's going to go outside. We just use winter use to determine what is your use over the course of the year. I will also note that sewer customers will be billed on a monthly basis as well now. That's another, you know, benefit. And the other benefit with the customer care and services, our bills, it's worth noting, will be combined with the various utilities, the telecommunications utilities, the, that Marx Group serves, the CMLP services. So people are going to get one bill, it's going to show all of the various utilities. And they're actually going to be, we're working with a light plant with a customer service where you make a call, you're going to end up talking to a customer service provider who will know all of the various utilities and be able to be sort of one-stop shopping. So you're not going to get bumped from the light plant to the water to, you know, find out final bills or that sort of thing. So that's going to be a real benefit, we think, and it's looking forward to, you know, that offering has actually started, so that's good news. Opinion of sewer service overall, reasonably priced, that's not bad. You know, the excessively priced wastewater is, you know, fairly costly to collect and treat. And like water and the buried utilities, we do expect you're going to see increased costs, primarily driven by replacement of sewer mains and/or environmental compliance based on quality of discharge at the treatment plant. Those are the two sort of drivers for costs that we anticipate. So that is the sewer system expenditures and the sewer improvement fund.
Can you tell me how long your contract is with the operator at the treatment center? And, you know, what's the cycle for that? When do you renegotiate that?
We have a 10-year term, which, I don't recall the specifics, but it has two-year off-ramps the town can exercise. And I believe we might be in year seven, with four left, four years. So we're six, in year six now, with two cycles that we can evaluate. It's, the program's worked out very well. One of the benefits of third party is that we get the operations group. It's Woodard and Curran, is a firm, they do sort of contract ops around the country. But you can also pull in their engineers and process engineers and specialists depending on, you know, site-specific needs, which is very helpful.
How old are the, how old is sewer system around the center? And say, back around Thoreau Street, Slidbury Road?
The sewer system is, it's interesting, next year I'll have an age, but it's even scarier than the water. Because the sewer system hasn't expanded significantly since it first went in place. When you bring water to a concentrated area, the first problem you have is, wait, we have all this wastewater, what do we do? So that's the downtown area where you needed the municipal sewer. But the outline areas, septic systems are, you know, two-thirds of the town have private septic systems, and they have the land and the ability to discharge. But the downtown areas were installed back at the turn of the century, well, 1900. So it's old, it's clay. Some of it's in good condition, unlike the water, it's not under pressure, which is interesting, and water pressures can fluctuate between 60 pounds per square inch to 150, depending on surges. And that really can, that causes those breaks and water hammers. Sewer's gravity, but in fairly deep. But the technology right now is less about removing it, because it's usually fairly deep in downtown areas, and lining it, you know, putting small liners in. And you're seeing more and more of that application happening. We're starting to require it on some old sewer laterals, those are the private services from the main to the building, where we actually have a very interesting policy in Concord. We require replacement of private laterals, water service or sewer lateral, to a property anytime there's major renovation. We've had many times where entire demolitions, every system, the house is rebuilt, every system is new, and you leave the old infrastructure, water and wastewater. And we've got to the point, if it's over 50 years, we require you to replace it and/or you can refurbish it for the technology like that sleeve.
It's also a very high water table in the congested area.
Exactly, which is why that's so important to seal it. But 100 years ago, it wasn't that important. It actually diluted some of the waste in flow.
Does everyone use just one rate for both residential and commercial?
It is the same for residential, commercial.
For us, it is. Does everyone do that? Do all the other towns do that?
I can't say everybody, because it's a big universe. I would say, no, I couldn't say that, I don't have the information. Bob, I don't know if you saw in your research if it's more common or not. We try to keep the balance of the commercial, residential, the same in both water and wastewater.
Is the commercial also prorated? Is the commercial also prorated seasonally like the residential?
That is not. It's only the residential customer. Commercials are billed based on actual use.
And in sustainable Concord, what, what becomes of the treated waste? Where does that ultimately end up?
So if it's collected through the municipal sewer system, it goes to our wastewater treatment facility over off Bedford Road and we discharge it to the Concord River. But it goes through a series, we're considered the equivalent of almost tertiary treatment. There's primary, there's secondary tertiary, and that's where you're getting rid of most of the pollutants, not all, it's just a question of degree. But the most significant pollutants of interest in most treatment facilities are the nitrogen and phosphorus. And we are a phosphorus-limiting environment, that's the Concord River. So we control phosphorus to levels that are significantly lower than most existing treatment facilities. That is changing. If you look up the Suasco, more and more facilities are upgrading to do the same level of treatment, but it goes to the Concord River.
So in the end, there really isn't any solid waste that needs to be removed or hauled off or?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. And then, so there's a fate and transport of sludge.
Sludge.
And I like to joke, this is my favorite, you get engineering drawings of process engineering and they show all the water coming in and the separations and the biological, chemical processes. Then you see this clean water with fish, you know, leaping in the pond. And then you have this thing called sludge with an arrow that points out, you know, off the page. In essence, it goes to an incinerator right now, hauled out, is it? Okay, well, thank you. That's a lot of, a lot of time, a lot of good questions. I appreciate it. I could be here all night, but I'm sure you have better things to do, so we'll move along. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I always enjoy these presentations. Next, we'll hear from the, from Kate Hodges, who's going to talk to us about Articles 44, well, Article 44.
Hi, I'm Kate Hodges, Deputy Town Manager. Article 44 seeks authorization to spend the funds which the town receives from Comcast Incorporated for PEG services. PEG stands for Public Education and Governmental Cable. The division is operating currently under the name Minuteman Media Network, which took over for CCTV Incorporated last October. The town currently receives 4.8% of all revenues generated by Comcast for their Concord subscribers. This amount, which is paid quarterly, equates to about $360,000 a year. An additional $60,000 is expected to be received from the town of Carlisle for services which Minuteman Media Network provides to their community. This graph shows the historical payment amounts received from Comcast over the past several quarters. In FY18, the town received a total of $388,000. We continue to see a decline in revenues and although not significant, we suspect may be attributed to Concord's successful broadband business, which you heard about earlier today. The positions included in fiscal year 20's budget have been classified and accepted by the Personnel Board and they include a new studio manager and two additional full-time positions. One, the technical services coordinator and a separate educational coordinator. Last month, we completed a comprehensive search for Minuteman Media Network's new studio manager and I'm happy to announce that Anya Zulawick has been hired to fill the role as, and she's scheduled to begin on April 1st. Anya will report directly to the town's Public Information and Communications Manager, Erin Stevens, who's in the back, who has been working for the town since September of 2017. Erin's job was reevaluated this past December to include oversight and management of the PEG operation. The town plans to begin the recruitment for the two open positions relatively soon and it's anticipated that Erin and Anya will make their recommendations on how to fill these roles in early May in order to ensure that the positions are all filled by the July 1st start date. In October of 2018, the town assumed responsibility for the PEG access cable services from CCTV Incorporated. Since that time, we've been working to develop internal operating structures and hire the necessary full and part-time staff to ensure quality programming and high levels of service. The town currently employs two full-time project specialists, which were offered temporary positions when the town took ownership of the PEG operation in October. However, all regular status positions are to be classified according to the town's centralized system that is reflected on the town-wide classification and compensation plan. When we took over in October, our understanding of the PEG business was limited. Therefore, those positions were given under temporary terms, offering only health insurance until we were able to generate accurate job descriptions and proposed salary ranges which are consistent with the market. The revenues for fiscal year 20 are budgeted at about $414,000. This amount includes 356 that were projected to receive in Comcast fees and an additional $57,000 from the town of Carlisle and a small amount, which is only a little over $1,000, which we are projected to receive from classroom-style registration fees and for fee programming. Expenses are budgeted just under $328,000, which include all personnel and non-personnel-related expenses. In fiscal year 20, we expect Minuteman Media Network to have approximately four and a half full-time equivalents, which would include the three full-time benefit-eligible positions spoken about earlier, as well as a number of part-time and per diem videographers and editors who work throughout the year. General fund services, which are indicated here in the middle of the sheet, accounts for a charge of $13,800. This amount equates to about 15% of the Public Information and Communication Manager's salary to reflect her work in overseeing the day-to-day operations of the division. The capital budget requests an amount up to $268,000. $10,000 of this will be used to either replace or update MMN's technological equipment. We've included $225,000 for what we're referring to as supplemental space. We're not definitively planning to use this amount for any one particular purpose. However, we've heard that the current studio location is less than public and less than ideal, as there are significant security measures in place to protect the sanctity of the school atmosphere. As such, members of the public are not able to access the studio or even the equipment in it until after school hours. As such, we plan to take time over the next several months to gather information and cost estimates for possible supplemental spaces, either in an existing town building or via some sort of mobile studio which may be available to the public when the official school studio is not. To that end, we've budgeted an amount up to $225,000 just to start the process, a needs assessment and then evaluation, which we will do in conjunction with the PEG Advisory We are looking forward to the town's first full year running the PEG station for Concord. We have a number of new programs and initiatives which we'd outlined in the Enterprise Book and hope the community will recognize this as a valuable and wonderful service which works to complement our already robust public information efforts. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'd like to note I was the shortest one of the night, if you're giving out awards.
Can I just ask one quick question about the, the fund balance? On January 1st, it was 1.17 million, so that'll be reduced by 240,000 to some 932,000? Is that the intention? And to, to, in addition to the, to the Comcast revenues?
Trying to find, where are you looking here?
And then, is the expectation that next year, the Comcast, Comcast revenues get added back to this fund to increase it by whatever that amount is next year?
Right. So the fund balance is the amount that we have there that we may or may not use for capital. So the operating revenue, basically, we, we're trying to have it at almost a break-even. And so the fund balance, yeah, we have it as reduced up to the amount that we may spend on capital, but it's, it's likely that we won't spend all that. So yes, it'd be retroactively put back in.
So, so at the end of 2019, the balance would be 932,000, but then next year, would the Comcast revenues be added back to that fund? Is that the way it works?
Yes.
Okay.
And the way that Carlisle is, is done is that, right now, we have a pay-as-you'd-go. However, we're proposing that next year, that we have a kind of a quarterly understanding for about 20 hours a week. And so should they use more than that or need more than that, then that would be billed. But I didn't build that into the budget this year, so it's pretty conservative on revenues.
Hi, I'm Carlin Reed. I'm Chair of the PEG Access Advisory Committee and it's been our pleasure to be working with the town on making sure that we have adequate programming as well as the public access program. The committee's asked me to, to give a short statement. The PAC, that's the Public Access Advisory Committee, as we call ourselves, the PAC members appreciate being included in the budget process so we can help citizens understand the long-term financial feasibility and viability of Minuteman Media Network and its current budget. The PAC members have reviewed the MMN budget and its capital plan and its members are comfortable with the information presented. I also wanted to highlight a couple of things coming up in the next fiscal year. We're going to be doing a survey for the town on what you folks want to see in PEG access, what you want broadcast and what, and when you want it broadcast on the channels. We're working, as Kate has mentioned, on looking for satellite studios. We're also going to be upgrading the website and working on a schedule for the programs. So we have a lot planned for next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Question about the Comcast reimbursements or the fees that we receive. What is the next review of the Comcast contract with the town? 2024, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hodges. All right. Last but not least, we're going to hear from Mr. Kane, who's going to tell us about Article 45.
Ryan Kane, Recreation Director. Thank you for having us tonight and going to present both Article 45, the BD Swim and Fitness Enterprise Fund, and additionally, quickly, the Recreation Revolving Fund, which is not an article, but we like to present that on an annual basis, so we're having some transparency with that account as well. So Article 45, BD Swim and Fitness expenditures, determine whether the town will vote to appropriate the amount required for the total expenses of the Community Pool Enterprise Fund for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020. For the operation of the Community Pool in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, C4453-F1/2, says funds to be expended under the direction of the town manager or take any other action relative thereto. The article was originally written with the 2008 Annual Town Meeting numbers, so the 2008 Annual Town Meeting appropriated fiscal year 2019 BD Center operating budget of $2,379,905, $2,122,500 from estimated revenues and $245,405 from the undesignated fund balance and a capital budget of $567,567,500 funded from the undesignated fund balance. Fiscal year 20 budget will be being submitted today. Concord Recreation Mission Statement is supporting and promoting community wellness and play and the core values of the Recreation Department is dedicated staff, innovative, inclusive and fun. So that's kind of what's driving our elements here. Some department highlights from the past year directly related to the BD Swim and Fitness Center, some facility enhancements in the summer of 2018, including the expansion and new floor in the weight room, addition of a fitness room in the lower lobby and reconfiguration of office spaces. We really reevaluated the space and tried to use better space for the members and put the offices in better locations throughout that, including moving the general manager's office to the upstairs to right in front of all the action. We made some staffing enhancements in the past year. We hired a new general manager, Andy Dutton, that we hired from BD Athletic, I mean, from Bapsen Athletic Department, and a program manager, Amanda Smith, that we hired from the Hayden Center in Lexington. We also transitioned a position from the swim and fitness specialist, personal trainer, to become a head lifeguard. So you will see that in the budget accounts. It looks like the head lifeguard's a new position, but that was a transition from an existing personal trainer position. Some department highlights for the past year, program highlights, 142 participants on the Otter Swim Team. We made some changes in the rules to be more accommodating to families. Some of those changes included access to the therapy pool during restricted hours. That was one of the complaints that we've heard over, over years from many families is that they would enter the therapy pool and not be allowed into there. So we have made it available to families or to all at certain hours. It still is available for adults only in the morning hours of every day. Some, we did a family swim day, open to the public, whether you're a member or not a member, a very highly successful day, even though the Patriots had a playoff game that day. It was very crowded and people got to see the facility, come out and enjoy it. One, just a good community outreach moment and two, an opportunity for us to sell the facility to them. We have started doing more programs like Kids Night Out Event, where parents of members can bring their children to the facility. They were, they swam and watched a movie there while the parents can go out, grab some dinner and come back, hopefully, and grab the kids. And we did some special pricing packages that were available for college students that were home during school break. And we have continued to kind of blend together the Recreation Revolving Special Events in the BD facility to host events like the St. Patrick's Day 5K Run, the Egg Hunt and the Trunk or Treat Events that were very successful for the community and, again, just made it a community access and use of that facility outside of the membership. Our budget goals for the coming fiscal year was to increase salaries with the minimum wage increases and that's for all the positions that were related to there or very closely close to the minimum wages that potentially needed bumps along the ways. Continue with budgeting categories to better understand spending. Previously to last year, BD had one budget element to it and we broke that down into five different budget categories that we'll go over coming up that can now tell us what it costs to run the pool, can now tell us what it costs to run the, the weight room component of it. And program staffing expenses are now driven more by revenue opportunities, examples of which are personal training and swim lessons. Personal trainers get a certain pay rate when they work with a client and we've kind of reduced the hours that they are doing when they're not working with clients to only times that we're in need for them to be in the facility. And so they're spending majority of their time that they're coming in with clients to the, the past, that hasn't been that way. And we're hoping to continue with facility maintenance at the facility. The second-floor rooftop units, HVAC units are in need of repair and replacement and the same with the hot water heaters for the facility. And those are two big projects we'll be looking to accomplish the coming year. And to continue with facility enhancements, we're looking to bring in some new cardio equipment in the next coming fiscal year into the cardio rooms there. Just a little bit of the budget history back to fiscal year 16, with the net income showing what was budgeted and what actually responded back for us. So the actuals have seen a negative for fiscal year 16 and 17 with a negative approximately $2,000 in fiscal year 17 and $242,000 in fiscal year 17. If you remember, we made some major changes with the staffing and evaluating the expenses at the facility in between there and we saw the results in fiscal year 18 and showed a profit of $70,000. And then for fiscal year 19, we're expecting to just slightly profit. And fiscal year 20, we're budgeting to even less slightly profit. But we are looking to budget and be on the, on the, on the positive side of that. So we are going in the right direction with that. It's important to know the actual fund balance at the end of fiscal year 2018 is $2,503,541. There is a healthy fund balance there for BD. So even if we had those negative years, BD's still operating and running. I can't tell you the number of times people say, I heard you're closing January 1st. You know, we have that safety net, we have that ability to make some changes and go through some growing pains and make some adjustments as we go along here. So that is there. We are constantly adding to that with the depreciation fund that we are putting in, approximately between $300,000 and $400,000 on an annual basis, going back into that fund balance. So that could, that balance will continue to grow as we go along. The fiscal year 2020 proposal, operating revenues at $2,353,000, less the operating expenses of $2,900,000. expenses of $2,92,993, and less the depreciation expense of $378,601, does give us an operating income of a negative of $118,594. But one of the advantages of having that $2.5 million is it's in an interest-bearing account, and so we are anticipating an interest income of the $118,992, which is what puts us in an overall net income on the positive side. Operating revenues by category, you'll see a couple of changes in here, and I'll try to explain them a little bit. The initiation fees have drastically gone down. That was one of the changes we made on the fee structure. Originally, initiation fees were $199 for anybody that signed up for the facility. We've dropped those to $99, and we quite often are reducing that as a membership marketing plan to try to get people in. So those numbers have come down, and will continue to come down on that element, because it's one of those things, we get somebody who comes in and wants to sign up for the facility, and then we're telling them, "Oh, by the way, we need an extra $199," and trying to stay more positive with the people coming in and signing up. Membership has kind of had a slight decline the last few years, but we are anticipating to bring membership back up. We have been making some changes. You'll see where the decline is coming up. I'll show a chart as the membership breakdown. It primarily is family membership, but we are making some major pushes and drives to move membership up. We're confident in those numbers. We presented to the Recreation Commission a strategic plan for how to move us forward and what we're going to do to take that on, and it involves from, you know, marketing and trying to bring families in to contacting the people who've left the facility in the last two to three years, and telling them that some things have changed at the facility. Come on in, try a week or two for free, and we'll follow up with an email and see if we want to get you back. So we have some plans in place, some elements that we'll be trying to go along on driving that membership up. Group exercise was moved over in fiscal year 18 from the Rec. Revolving Budget to the BD Enterprise Fund, and that continues to stay pretty steady there, and those are the group exercise classes that occur throughout town at different facilities. But if you have a BD membership, you receive a reduced rate to those group exercise classes. And that change was kind of keeping the fitness professionals in charge of the fitness activities. Rentals of the facility primarily is the diving well and the Boston-area diving club coming out and renting the facility, and you've seen that increase and go up, and we're consistently have that group in there. Miscellaneous revenue prior to fiscal year 17 was very low, but that is where the $10, I mean, the 10-visit, $100 passes go into, and so that's our major spike in fiscal year 17, and has continued to grow there, and we continue to see that be a good outlet for people in the community who didn't want to necessarily pay the full membership fee for a year, but had an outlet and an opportunity to get to the facility. Swim programs did see a slight decline, and we have brought, as I said, Amanda Smith in from the Hayden Center, and she is gung-ho and offering new swim programs and opportunities. So we're positive about getting that back into the right direction of where we were. And training is the personal training that is done at the facility, and we're going back in another positive direction with there. We had a lot of staff changes within fiscal year 17 and 18. That's an impact in that area. This unfortunately is the best I can put up for a membership chart, but the key point I want to make is if you go over from 2008 to 2018, you saw that individuals slightly went up, and families were going down simultaneously. So a lot of those families left to go from a family package to an individual package as the family downsized, and a lot of those families just left. And we haven't backfilled those families, and that's been the problem and the challenge that we've been trying to get back to. I keep saying to the staff, if we can bring the family membership numbers back to approximately those 2015 numbers, around 500 family memberships, we will be in very good financial standing. So offering good swim lessons, going back to the core of what the families want, making some family-friendly rule changes in there to make it more accommodating for them are things that we're going in the right direction of trying to bring the families back into the facility. So that's really the major change that's impacted the membership, has been the family reduction, and that's something we've been focusing on and trying to make improvements as we go along. Operating expenses, as I said, we broke these down into categories last year, and this is going to help us manage the operation much better. In the past, you could see fiscal year 17, it was all in one lump sum budget. We broke it down into the following categories. Group exercise, which kind of already came over from an existing budget at the hunt operation. Aquatic management, which means what it takes to run the pool. That is the cost of the chemicals, that's the cost of the mechanicals, that's the cost of the lifeguards on deck just to watch for basic pool safety. And then aquatic programming, that's what it costs to run the swim lessons, the swim team, all those type programs, and that's mostly staff-driven on the aquatic programming. And aquatic programming has revenues attached to it. With the aquatic management, the only revenues would be the membership revenues coming in. Fitness management is what it costs to run the gym facility, the upstairs component of it, and that includes the staff that are there that are not working with a personal training client. That includes repairs to the equipment, and the cost of anything that's a direct cost that's related to either the cardio room or the weight room upstairs. And then training is the cost of the personal trainers when they are with a client, and that has a revenue directly attached to it consistently. And so our expenses are all outlined there, and we have a total of $2,471,594 for fiscal year '20. Where the expenses are driven outside of those programs, just of the different categories, personnel is 45% of those expenses. That is full-time and part-time staff. General purchase is mostly purchasing, whether it's chemicals for the facilities, whether it's small mechanical upgrades, whether it's repairs to the spin bikes, et cetera. Program expense is things that are directly related to the program. So Otter Swim Caps would be an example of small funds like that. General fund expenses and depreciation. Just kind of a highlight of some of the major expenses. Personnel services is $1,097,906, of which the full-time administrative staff is our four managers on site, is $292,321. The program's full-time staff, which would be the personal trainers and the head lifeguard, is $170,859,000. And the limited staff, which is the part-time staff, which is mostly lifeguards and front desk, is $499,000, and benefits of $99,518 for the total personnel services. Depreciation fund is scheduled for $378,601. That is slightly dependent on what we do for capital in the coming year, but that is based on anticipation of us doing the full capital that we had planned out. General fund is $98,350, and you see the categories that's broken down for the general fund transfers there. Again, in the coming year, we're looking to do some enhancements to the equipment in the cardio room for improvements. We're looking for addition and improvements to the swim lesson program to better provide swim lesson opportunities for families. A change in the management of the personal trainer hours. For the most part, personal trainers are going to be on staff when they're with clients or if they're in a need for the facility. So a need for the facility would be Sunday, when we don't have any other managers there. So there could be a personal trainer there without clients. But if that personal trainer's coming in on a Tuesday, they're going to be coming in to work with clients, especially with the limited-status individuals. But the full-time-status individuals, we've provided goals for them to say, "Right now, you're at 20% of your time is with personal training clients. We want you to be at 60% of your time with personal training clients," because that follows up with revenues in the long term. And member-focused events and programs, we are continuing to do a lot of member retention programs there. If you're a swimmer, you notice that we just did the Swim the English Channel program, and that's really trying to drive that member retention, which is a key component in here is, you know, as we're trying to bring in new members, we can't be going down in our current membership. So we've been trying to put more things out there to improve upon member retention. And one of the new elements you'll see is with the downstairs fitness room, is we are going to open up a component to rent it out for birthday parties, which I think adds to that family membership value, and that would be for members' families only for that. So again, Article 45, BD Swim and Fitness Expenditures, to determine whether the town will vote to appropriate the amount required for the total expenses of the Community Pool Enterprise Fund for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020, for the operation of the community pool in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws C44-53-F1/2. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the town manager or take any other action relative thereto. Any questions on the Enterprise Fund?
Yeah, I have a question. If I'm reading this pie chart right, it says, membership is free for 80, if you're 80 and older, and that's 22% of the members. Is that what that's saying?
From the budget book?
Yeah.
Okay. Currently, membership, we made a change about two years ago in the fees for 80-plus. It used to be free. We are $199 for 80-plus. We did grandfather-in, anybody that was currently in the plan as having the free membership. So we still have a lot of free memberships on the books for individuals over 80, but anybody coming in currently would pay $199 a year for the membership.
Okay. Because my question is that having 22% of your members using the facility for free, I just don't see how that was sustainable.
Yeah. Yeah. For some, use is seven days a week, and for some, use is one time a year. So that was part of the original development. When they went out to raise funds, they received some funds from an organization that was really driven towards senior population. So I think that was part of the original agreement, but as we went through times, we didn't see that to be sustainable. So we at least added that fee component into there. It's still a very reasonable price to come in. Did that answer the question?
Yes.
Okay.
Where do the personal trainers get their clients? Is it strictly through the BD Center? Or do they...
It's always twofold. It's 50% them, 50% us working to get their clients for that. And it is typically through the BD Center. So when you come in and register for a new BD membership, you do have a free evaluation with a personal trainer that's offered. We have started doing new marketing plans. One of our membership sales pushes for a month was that you got five free personal training sessions if you signed up during that month, which introduced those individuals to the personal trainer, and they had the opportunity to kind of sell their product and what they're doing to those individuals. And part of it's also just their personality and showing and to how they display best and, you know, gaining clients themselves.
Can they bring in people who are not members but charge a higher fee?
You can get personal training at BD without a membership, and you pay additional more. That is a small percentage that does that. Majority of the, a high majority of the personal training clients are BD members.
I think it was Slide 7, but my memory is not as good as it ought to be. You showed a $570,000 or approximate capital plan, but on Page 7-12, capital plan is $325... Two more back, I think, 7? Nope, I guess I'm wrong. I don't know.
I didn't have the capital plan in this presentation. Depreciation?
Keep going back. I think it's...
Wouldn't it be back?
It would be back. Okay. My recollection was that you showed a number that was in the $500,000 range that involved capital.
Yeah, I didn't have capital on here. So let me look.
I'll recant.
Okay, yeah.
So your program for this year is $325,000 per the book?
Correct.
Okay. I can read the numbers here.
Okay. Sorry.
I just have a quick suggestion. So I see you're proposing to spend $225,000 on heating and air conditioning and ventilation. And I just wondered whether you might be able to fund some of that through a Green Communities grant. I don't know if you're familiar with those. The town has usually done pretty good with those, and the schools also have done pretty well.
Yeah. We've been working closely with Kate Hanley, the Sustainability Director, on coming up with programs and things that we can do over at the BD, and working with her to go out and apply for things, from as simple as pool covers to keep the heat in the facility overnight, especially the therapy pool, to much larger projects. So she has been involved in those and has talked about applying for grants for many things on that.
In the budget book, there's a line item in general purpose called Purchase Services. What is that? It's on Roman numeral 7-7. It's about $700,000.
Purchase Services is a lot of contracted services that we would have come in and do things within the facility. It is equipment that we purchase in the facility to, anything that isn't capital would be included within that, to the chlorine that goes into the pool would be included in that.
Okay. Thank you. Can you go back to Slide 7? Oh, no, must have been after that then. It's the page that you showed, administrative, and then everything else broken out. Go back. There it was. There it is. So what is left in admin for 1.8 out of 2.5 million? Everything else?
Yeah, well, electricity, we're not able to break out throughout the expenses of the pool versus the weight room, so the total electric bill comes out of that. Depreciation comes out of that. The full-time staff that, and the front desk staff that aren't directly related to either the weight room or the pool itself directly, those type of components is all within there.
Okay. And there was another one where you showed what the, oh, maybe it's in the budget book, what the administration cost was, or administration employees or something? I'm going to...
So the, yeah, so the full-time administrative staff, $292,000 is the four managers that are on the site. So we have a BD Center General Manager, an assistant to the General Manager, a program manager who for the most part oversees the swim operation, and a membership coordinator that fall within that.
So it's sort of overhead personnel?
Correct. Yeah. Management of the facility.
Okay. Right.
And the program's full-time is like personal trainers and the head lifeguard.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on the Swim and Fitness Enterprise?
One of your latter charts had the coming year. I didn't see a real hot tub on that chart.
If you took the pool operator class, you would know why they don't do real hot tubs. Very hard to maintain. We'll turn the therapy pool up an extra degree for you when you go in. I'm going to try to go quickly through the Recreation Revolving account. Again, this is not an article, but this is the revolving account that kind of works like an old-fashioned checkbook, for lack of better terms. This involves the general recreation programs, basketball before and after school, carousel, special events, summer camp, visitor center, and white pond are the two major components that have been added in the last couple of years. Past year's accomplishments, some new programs and events have continued on the town-wide special events as charged by the town manager a few years back. This year, we offered new princess and superhero breakfasts along with Trails End. We did summer concerts in West Concord, and a new program we did this year was a teen adventure camp, Trekkers, where they went on a field trip every single day, and that was immensely successful. Facility and department enhancements, we have new glass backboards at the Emerson Playground, looking to continue that as we go through Emerson Playground and Rideout Playground, new shed at the Emerson Pool built by the Minuteman Tech students, and the first department vehicle, which is a Ford F-250 Hybrid, which usually shocks people when they see a truck that big as a hybrid. But that was a, after seeing our staff drive around town in their small vehicles with, full with stuff for special events, was a much-needed thing for the department. Financial assistance, again, the department is focused on being able to provide financial assistance. We provided over $160,000 in financial assistance for recreation programs in the past year. Fund balance for the Recreation Department is $1,117,159 as of June 30th, 2018. Fund balance analysis, at its current level, the Recreation Fund balance covers 54% of the fiscal year '19's operating expenses, and it is important for the Recreation Department to maintain strong reserves due to the unpredictability and variability in revenues, funds that are dependent on participation fees. The annual operating goal of the Recreation The annual operating goal of the Recreation Department is to operate as a self-sustaining entity and is to operate with a positive annual fund balance and to keep programs affordable. So budget goals is, the first goal is to not increase the existing fund balance. This is the second year in a row that the auditors have made a statement that they would like to see us reduce the fund balance. And so we have developed a, have a written plan to do so, but I don't, I'm not so sure it always will come out to that. We will probably end up a little closer to break even and I'll explain as we go through, but. And a major goal for us was to keep user fees static or minimal increase across the board. We also incorporated minimum wage increases in all staffing expenses. We established a White Pond budget line item, new budget code so it can be tracked independently. There is the twenty thousand dollars in assistance from the General Fund for the White Pond, White Pond operation for fiscal year twenty twenty. An expansion of visitor center programs and management. And we're funding Visitor Center Tourism Manager, which is in the General Fund budget, what we will be transferring sixty thousand dollars into the General Fund budget to, to pay for that new position. Fiscal year comparison, two thousand seventeen and eighteen, we finished strong financially with a hundred and fifty-two thousand in net income and in fiscal year two thousand eighteen with ninety-two thousand in net income. We did budget on paper per the auditor's request to reduce the fund balance at about a hundred and six thousand dollars last year. We are on path right now to make a small profit in the Recreation Revolving Account. And I would say roughly in the zero to fifty thousand dollar range, which is a good target goal for us. That's a small percentage when we're talking about a two million dollar budget. And then again, this year on paper, we budgeted to, to be down a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. That would be if all of our expenses come through. Our expenses don't all come through. We're usually running about eighty-five to ninety percent of our expenses on a regular basis. So it, it's more apt to be at a break even point. But I think that's kind of staying, not, that's not expanding the fund balance as we go along. So I have some confidence that that one oh six number you see for net income for fiscal year nineteen will be a positive when you see the end result for that. I just pull, I pull my reports every Monday morning. I pull my reports again and we're right on path as we've been the past two previous years. I think I put that slide in there twice. Here's a breakdown of the categories. And the revenues and expenditures, admin is the overhead of the department. And that's one million two hundred and eighty-five thousand. Rec programs is just general programs that happen like art class type programs. And that is to net seventy-six thousand. White Pond, first time up, will be interesting in how, how that plays out. We're not quite sure how it's going to play out, but we're pretty confident that we'll be in that negative thirteen thousand and that doesn't include the twenty thousand from the town General Fund. So we should be in a positive element on White Pond's operations. Summer programs, seventy-seven thousand. The school year program, which is the beast of the Recreation Department that is going all school year from seven AM to six PM, is a net of seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Sports programs, thirty-two thousand to the plus. Special events is typically a loss because there isn't too many revenues coming in on sponsorship for that and that's a loss of approximately seventeen thousand. Rentals of the facility is a thirty-six thousand plus. And the visitor center operation to be a plus nine thousand seven hundred. That does not include the expense of the full-time staff member that is in that other budget. So that expense is in our admin and our general fund transfers. Expenses Personnel Services is fifty-seven percent of our budget. Purchase Services, twenty-five percent, and that includes contracted staff sometime. Supplies, five percent. General fund transfers, eleven percent. Capital and other is just at one percent each. Major expenses Personnel Services, full-time administrative staff is the staff that it takes to run the Recreation Department outside of myself. I am in the General Fund. And that's five hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-six. Limited status at part-time, six hundred and ten thousand. Benefits of approximately a hundred and nineteen thousand. And the General Fund transfers, you can see each of the categories. The visitor center, General Fund transfer does include the sixty thousand for the individual full-time staff member there within that. In the coming year, some of the upgrades and improvements we'll be doing is we're going to do a registration software upgrade. Our software registration is antiquated. We can do online registration, but it is a very old version of online registration and we are looking to upgrade the entire software system so that we could better do that. And does also provide, it will be web-based, so it does provide access for the staff at all times, so we can figure and look at where things are happening on our phone at a moment's notice. To include White Pond programming and establish that for visitor center expansive role within the community and having that position available will give us that opportunity and that outlet to do that, to stay static on our pricing and to continue to add community events throughout town. We are running in two new ones that we're aware of right now is a Bike Fest celebrating bicycling in town and a Cinco de Mayo race that will be operating out of the BD Center. And that is it. Any questions on the Recreation Revolving Fund?
Can I just ask one question? Were, were the membership fees for White Pond reduced from something to something lower?
The membership fees currently are a hundred and fifty for resident, one ninety for non-resident. Under the old association, they were higher than that. They were in the three hundred plus range.
Yeah.
So the, the fees did come down. The time that, that were opened has come down too, so it it's not necessarily apples to apples, but the fee has come down to a
And so do you know the rationale for reducing the fees from?
It's very competitive with what other surrounding counties are doing, Wayland, Wellesley, et cetera. And we think ultimately, long-term, we're going to be close to that number to be able to operate in a positive.
Okay, that's where I was going with that one.
The long-term would be to get us to a positive element there.
Thank you.
So why would the auditors want you to spend down your fund balance?
You guys had the same question last year.
I used to be one, so I, just, just so you know, I, I can't understand why that would be their request.
Carrie's going to answer for me. Thank you, Carrie.
I'm Carrie LaFleur, Finance Director. I think the auditors are asking what the plan is for that fund balance. I don't necessarily think they're asking to spend it down, but just why do we have it and what are you looking to use it for? I had some other question, now I forgot. I forget.
So a, a new component here is the visitor center, this expansive role as you have on this slide. I just would like a little more clarity on, you know, what's the revenue opportunity? You show a twenty-five thousand dollar revenue opportunity at the visitor center. That, that I don't understand. And the sixty K in this new staff position, I just, is that coming out of the revolving fund? That's, in other words, the revolving fund is funding a new staff position, but there's nearly no revenue to back that up.
Correct. So the current, the twenty-five K is pretty similar to what we're currently doing. That's happening from the annual operation right now. So we sell ads for a map that, that is a lot to, to that element. We sell some merchandise there with the intention of not competing with the local businesses, but we do sell some merchandise there and we do guided tours. And that's, so that's where the twenty-five K is based from. The, the individual, it will be coming in to manage the facility to help to manage the tourism groups within town and to try to create new revenues to, the long-term goal is to offset that sixty thousand dollar cost with revenues coming in to offset that.
Would those revenues flow into the General Fund? Would they flow into the, into the Rec Department? Where would those revenues flow into?
Hi, sorry. This visitor center is a hybrid between my operation and, and recreation. So one of the other things is that we receive five thousand dollars for each cultural district, both West Concord and Concord Center. And so we plan on using that money to help with the tourism and visitor center manager. So there's an additional ten thousand for that, five thousand for this year, and we plan on using only five of it. It also is a pilot program, so it's a three-year pilot program. So one of the things, as Ryan was talking about, was partnering with area tour companies or other bus companies or doing expanded visitor services either with the National Park Service and the Concord Museum and other places like that and doing some downtown business association stuff to raise enough revenue to be able to have their position be self-sustaining. So that's a pilot program that we have. So we're going to revisit it after the next, well, probably next year and the year after. And so if, if that
I'm still not clear on how it's raising revenue to pay for the position. It sounds like it's raising, you know, entrances at the Concord Museum or it might be, you know, generating national park visitors. Just how is this generating revenue to fund the position?
Sure, yeah. I mean, the idea is that it, it will, much like the recreation programs do, so there's a, a pay-to-play aspect of that. We have a couple of different ideas for that. Ryan can talk to you.
So it's certainly the, the vision to, for it to happen in the pay-to-play type format. I could tell you, unfortunately, managing the position while managing the Rec Department over the past year, there's a lot of money left on the table. There are a lot of groups that aren't being accommodated for tours that are coming in and doing that. There's a, a lot of organization and structure that, that, there are opportunities out there of people who already come into town that is just not organized and structured into what is happening in the flow that is happening on there. You know, the, the money we bring in from tours is very nominal right now and the simple reach and contacts out to the American Bus Association and to the tour groups and connecting with them that are already coming into town and, and creating it so that they're utilizing our tour guides in that element would be a very simple fix to, to start to see some revenue come in on there. Not the whole sixty thousand.
So now I'm starting to understand. So you would bring them into the visitor center and use the visitor center tour service as a revenue?
As one of the pieces, correct, yeah.
How much? How much is raised from the, I own a small business in town and how much do you actually raise at the visitor's center with people buying brochure space from local businesses and the map? Is there much?
Yeah, it's about twelve thousand dollars.
So this is, I, I just am trying to follow how the revenue comes. What are, who pays you revenue? So where do, people, it's, is it on a per transaction basis? It said school year. What does that mean?
For, in, within the program.
In the book, yeah.
School year programs are mostly daycare model. So before school, so if you drop your child off to our program before
So an individual subscribes to the service and they pay for it. Is that the majority of your revenue? Someone's paying you to do something?
Yes, yeah. Summer camp, art class, basketball programs, et cetera. Any other questions on the Rec Revolving Account? Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. And thank you all for coming for the last public hearing in advance of town meeting. Look forward to seeing you all on that wonderful Monday evening. Good night.